Hello, good afternoon. I hear the bells ringing for afternoon. It is noon here in Columbus. Thank you so much for joining us today for a discussion with council member Loris Borrosa de Padilla from the Columbus City Council. I am so excited to have this conversation. I have been waiting for this since you took office. And I know that our matriots out there in the Zoomosphere have been waiting for this conversation as well. We are incredibly excited to hear from you today and learn not only about your pathway to office, but what you hope to do next, once you're there. A couple of Zoom hygiene, Zoom and Facebook hygiene comments first. Our members and guests in the Zoomosphere, you have been muted upon entry. Let's leave it on mute for today. You can go ahead and put comments into the chat box if you have comments. If you're really proud of something that you hear, you're really excited or you want to tell us you love it. You can click on the reactions button, give us a heart, give us one of those little celebratory horns, do some high fives and let us know that you are listening. Out in the Facebook world, if you're there, go ahead and comment and let us know that you are listening. We can take questions from the comment box on Facebook or from the chat box. I'll try to incorporate those as Loris and I have a conversation together and just engage and enjoy each other's presence today on this somewhat gloomy Thursday. That's why you're here with me in front of my fireplace. And Loris told me that she has a heater right next to her that maybe we'll be hearing here to keep her warm. So I, as I said, I am so excited to get to introduce you. You are a newly elected city council member. She comes to us, her experience is as a daughter of immigrants here in the Columbus area, raised by two incredibly hardworking Columbus citizens. And she has had a focus on women's issues and on the community ever since she graduated high school, focusing at city year and moving through the ranks at city year, helping students and communities engage with the Columbus area. Loris, I want to give you just a couple of minutes to say hello. And then let's launch into just the back and forth and a moment of exploring your candidacy and your service on city council.
Absolutely. Well, thank you Emily for giving me this opportunity and thank you to the matriots for giving me this time today. I'm going to make this brief because I know that we're going to go into, you know, in some of the questions, we'll go into background and kind of why I chose to run for office. But I think it's, I reposted the other day, the stat that the matriots actually put out that Ohio or Columbus, right, or Franklin County, was it? Or was it the stat around like we are the lowest in the country in terms of like municipal female leadership?
Forty percent out, we're 40th out of 50 states. We posted that from the Center of American Women in Politics at Rutgers. Yes.
Right. And so I think that's why gatherings like this, organizations like the matriots is so important. Because I think that, you know, studies have shown women leaders, we lead differently. We're more effective, we come to compromises, we're, you know, we're more compassionate leaders. And I think that especially for where we are and some of our communities are, especially coming out of COVID, that's the kind of leadership that we need. And we see some of the dangerous policies that we see right now coming across both at the national level and at the state level. We need more leaders that are in place that, you know, women do it all, right? We are the increasingly becoming the heads of households, we lead families, we lead church groups, we lead school groups, we lead communities. And so any organization that is uplifting the voice of women and providing them with more opportunities and also that we are building a community that we're being supportive of each other and creating pathways for women to lead is incredibly important. And I think now more than ever.
So talk to me a little bit about how you decided to run for office, where you got the fire to move into this, you know, this new role at the city council. And correct me if I'm wrong, but you are the first Latina to be on Columbus City Council. And is it also true that you're the first daughter of immigrants to be on Columbus City Council? So talk to us about this pathway, because this is huge.
Yeah, so first Latina, actually, I'm the first person who's not black or white that's on the city council. First person from the immigrant migrant refugee community that's been on city council. I mean, I'm sure there might've been someone way back in the day, you know, some German, right? I'm thinking about German village in Columbus, but man, who was like on council at some point. But what really drove me to this work is, as you mentioned, when you introduced me, I started off my career right out of high school. I was an AmeriCorps member. AmeriCorps is a corporation for national and community service. It gives people the opportunity to serve their country in a very different way, right? So you could join the military or you can, you could go to the Peace Corps. You can join AmeriCorps where we do everything from building playgrounds, education, work focused organizations, working with seniors. I mean, you kind of name it as a gamut of the AmeriCorps experience. And I worked on the south side of Columbus, turning an old church into a community center. And at that time, I had the opportunity to, you know, we ran after school programs, senior breakfast program, ran a free store where people could really shop with dignity. So it was like going into a store, we would say, what are you looking for today? And we'd pull sizes and package things up nicely. So, you know, you could still have that like amazing customer service and experience that folks had, even if you didn't have the money to pay for those resources. And we started to recognize pretty quickly that we weren't sure that we were meeting all of the needs of this community. And so at 17, I started knocking on doors with my teammates who were all between the ages of 17 to 25 and sitting in people's living rooms. And I quickly learned how to listen, which I can say this as a mother of a teenager now, is not easy for a 17-year-old, who thinks they know lots of things. But I learned to really listen to people. I also learned that proximity is everything, right? That when we are proximate to people who have different experiences than ourselves, we start to see each other's humanity. And that's when we really start to build bridges. And, you know, the same prosper, or promise of prosperity and safety and democracy that brought my parents to this place called Ohio, lives in communities around Columbus, lives in communities around Ohio, right? People want the same thing fundamentally for their children. They want a good education, they want good jobs. They want a safe place to live. They want a home, right? And they want to be part of a community. And so that's when I knew that this was going to be my life's work. And so I spent, you know, I've been in city year for 25 years, worked at all levels of the organization, worked in communities around the country, had even had the opportunity to do service internationally in Mexico and in Europe and learned a lot and came back home to Columbus to be the executive director of our site here. And, you know, I come from a family that, you talked about my parents being immigrants. So my mom still lives in the same house, the only house. It would, it would be anybody else's starter house. It's our forever house. She still lives there to this day at 82. It's also a house that she's still paying for at 82 that she bought with my father in the seventies, right? And that's a reality for too many people. And so I came back to Columbus and it was a very different city than the city I grew up in. And it was changing rapidly, right? And we decided to make this home, me and my husband, and we're raising our girls here. I moved four minutes away from my mother after my father died to be closer to her. If you would've told my 18-year-old self that I would've called you a lie. But it was these experiences, right? It was how the city is changing. It was seeing the experience that my mothers had. It was my lived experience working in communities that I started to understand that there was a perspective that was missing. Immigrants, migrants and refugees are the number one factor behind our population growth as a city. We've, in the 50-some years that my parents had been in this country, they'd never seen anyone who looked like them or had their shared experience at the decision-making table, right? Like to never have that at the table. And as somebody who is often the only, right? I went to a high school where literally there were like three Latinos in my high school. And it was actually a high school that was predominantly black, right? So it was an interesting phenomenon of being like a minority, growing up in more of a minority community, right? It was, I was often the only person in the room that had my experience that was first generation American or was Latina or was bilingual, or the list goes on. Sometimes in spaces where I was the only woman, right? And when you're the only one who walks into a space, you quickly scan the room for who else is missing, right? Because you're like, if I slid in here, who, who didn't get to slide through that sliver that let me in, right? And so I started to quickly see that as our city was growing and changing, we needed more diverse voices at the table. And I thought that I had a different perspective to bring. And, you know, I don't have a traditional path. I worked at city year. I hustled hard to get to the places where I've been. I didn't graduate from college. I didn't take that traditional path, right? I didn't have all of the like necessary credentials. My family doesn't have a whole lot of money, you know, obviously. And so I think that it's important for especially our young people and other people in the community to see that you don't have to reach some level of something, of this arbitrary like attainment of credentials or things or experiences to give back, right? To have your voice heard, to have your lived experience help to inform your decisions as a leader in your community. And so it was all of those experiences for me that brought me to this place of, you know, especially during COVID, where we had this like very delicate system and we laid a pandemic on top of it and something had to burst. And that's what we saw, you know? And so I think that consciousness that was awakened in people, it was all the rest of the noise that got quieted. And so we could really focus as, as a community, as people, right? And we saw, we started to see each other's humanity because we were going through the shared experience together. So all of those things brought me to this place and brought me to this time to say, you know, if there was ever a time where we needed a different perspective, it was now more than ever.
And, you know, and I, this fire that you bring to the table here in Columbus is so necessary and important for driving change. Where do you see your voice fitting into the conversation and making the biggest impact over the course of your time on city council?
Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, I'm a pretty straight shooter. You know, for good or for bad, right? And I think that, I think that I have learned that a lot of times we don't make things accessible for people. Government is, is complex and challenging to understand. Local government even more, right? We've created all these checks and balances that make us wicked inefficient. And so oftentimes, I think we're not making the information or processes acceptable to everyone on an equitable playing field. Like how are we just speaking English to people? I sit in council meetings all day where I'm like reading words and saying big numbers that people don't understand. At the end of the day, we're giving a million dollars to what, right? And so we have tried to make things more accessible by, you know, whether it's showing the renderings of new projects that are coming up or actually in English explaining what this piece of legislation means. So folks understand how it's going to impact their lives, right? And how are we having real conversations that are like this, that are honest with people? Sidewalks are wicked expensive. I'm not sure you're going to get it. That doesn't mean that it's impossible, but I want to be honest about what it is that we can do. But how can we get to creative solutions about some of the things that are plaguing our, and plaguing's, I hate that word too, but some of the challenges that we're having in our community, how do we come up with creative solutions? How do we work together? Because I also believe in community work, and this is a thing that I've learned. We both need to have skin in the game, right? I cannot put things back on you as a citizen. And obviously, it is my job to elevate your voice. So how do we work together? And the best ideas come from, come from our neighbors. It's not from us, right? It comes from us partnering together and it's an all-in effort. And that's real. If we're going to create the kind of city that we want to be, that means that all of us have a part in that. We're not going to legislate our way out of things. We're not going to police our way out of things. We're not going to policy our way out of things. I mean, whatever it is, I mean, it's going to take everybody doing a little something, right? And it's going to take us being creative and making things accessible for people and thinking like, okay, if I can't get you a sidewalk, what's the thing? What is the other thing that we can do in this neighborhood, right? Where, where we set aside dollars to invest in tactical urbanism, right? This is like those flex poles and a temporary stop sign that can meet some of the traffic issues in your neighborhood, right? So we can make it a little bit safer. So when you are walking on those streets that may not have that sidewalk, at least at the end of that, until we come up with that longer-term traffic solution, that's going to take us five to seven years, because in reality, it does. And we can do long-term work to change some of those processes. We can come up with solutions today to meet those issues for the now as we work on the later.
With the immigrant migrant and refugee community being one of the communities that's outpacing others in the growth of Columbus, how do you, what are the key issues that are facing those communities? I mean, it's all, we all share the same issues, right? But what are some key factors that you see affecting that particular community that you want to work on?
Yeah, well, I'm glad you brought that up. So we actually, you know, for folks who may or may not know, each one of the council members, we have a committee that we chair that is aligned with the department within the city. And so I chair the neighborhoods committee, which is all of our area commissions. And I really like to say it's, it's the work of where all the people are, right? So it's, you know, our Nala Leadership Academy, MBK, My Brother's Keeper. Some other programs are kind of housed under neighborhoods. We've expanded the work of that committee to include what we're calling Irma, which is immigrant migrant and refugee affairs. And we were deliberate in calling that and not calling it New Americans, just as a quick kind of like learning point. You know, not everyone will become an American for a variety of reasons. Some people's, some people already see their identity as American, because you might be from
Central America or South America.
And so we wanted to ensure also that, you know, an immigrant usually comes here for prosperity. A refugee literally comes here seeking refuge. And a migrant could be from California or Puerto Rico, right? Who's not going to have the same sort of issues. And so we've kind of lumped all these folks under this like umbrella of New American without really distinguishing or honoring their path and, and who they are and their identity. And so that's why we named it that. And so we're actually starting a year-long process where we're going to have a series of town halls to talk specifically around, you know, we could have an education town hall with young people and we could also have it with their parents, right? And we're bringing stakeholders to the table. So we might bring Columbus City schools. We might bring other education partners that have a stake in really hearing these conversations to be active listeners. So not these town halls as sometimes we've done in the past where it's like we talk for 45 minutes and the neighborhood talks about, or the community talks about a myriad of things. And we never can get really deep and under the hood on what the real issues are. So we want that process to inform our work. So to your point around what the priorities are, I mean, I could, I could say what the priorities are, what I think they are, what feels very obvious. But in order for us to really be intentional about meeting these communities of where they are and investing in ensuring that they have access, they need to lead that work and they need to inform us, right? And so again, working on the, like now and the later, after those town halls, we'll have a meeting with all the stakeholders to say, okay, what are the things that we heard? What are the things we can be doing now, right? And then what's the longer-term plan? What are the longer-term priorities that we can have a plan around for, you know, the foreseeable future for the next five years, three years that we can work on, that we can really see impact in these communities?
Well, many of these individuals are not going to be like political insiders. They're not going to necessarily, you know, the ones that you're gaining information from, they're not going to know how the process works. And that actually makes me think back maybe to your process of being a candidate. And I don't think you were a political insider before you sought out this, this particular role. So can you give us some insight on how you gained knowledge about how to, how to run a successful campaign? And I know that's a bit of a move from what we were just talking about, but it struck me as thinking about these individuals who don't necessarily understand how politics work. They're not engaged in the political process, but we want to hear their voice. How do we do the same for people who want to be candidates who aren't part of the political process?
Absolutely. I mean, I had a little bit of a benefit because I worked in an organization that kind of worked on a campaign kind of schedule as an organization. I mean, we have a new crop of young people that join the organization year over year. So we run on like a school calendar year. So it has a very campaign feel to it. So some of the, some of that idea of how do you communicate, how do you engage? How do you recruit volunteers? How do you galvanize the community around an idea? Were things that I think are applicable, right? Like, I mean, you know, if you run your kid's soccer team, right? If you're like a soccer mom, those same ideas, you could move over, right? You organize people, you communicate with people, right? You have to think about messaging to people, like all of these things that we, you fundraise, right? You fundraise, you fundraise for your, you might fundraise for your kid's school. You might fundraise for a particular cause or you might volunteer. I mean, you're doing all of these things. The challenge is that because you're not as close to it, it feels unattainable to you, right? I mean, because it was an executive director of a nonprofit and, you know, our nonprofit really believes that, you know, everybody is part of the community and they should all have voice in the process. So everybody from a young person in a school to the longtime community resident, big business, small business, we all need to, you know, community leaders, we all need to come together. That same ideal has kind of run everything that I've done, right? So even when I was an executive director, I met with our city council members every year. I understood the importance of engaging them. City Year is a federally funded program through AmeriCorps. So I understood that process. I went to Hill Days where, you know, I went to talk to our senators and congresspeople about, you know, issues that we're facing, our communities. And so I was close enough that I understood that process. And so I think that making this attainable for people, like if you have this idea that you want to run, number one, there's a million, not, I shouldn't say a million, there's a lot of organizations where you can understand the process and it makes it more accessible, right? And then I think it's having conversations, I mean, up until the time that I, before I ran, I started having conversations with sitting council members, with people who had run for office before. I had worked on campaigns before. I worked on the Obama campaign. I worked on the Kerry campaign when I lived in Boston. And so I had some opportunities again to have that experience that helped to inform my process. So for me, campaigning started when I needed to gain petition signatures to get on the ballot because we were in the middle of COVID. So people were locked down. There was no events for me to go to. I had to do everything online. I mean, to get our petitions signed, we had to have drive-through events. So social media, text, phone calls, my network of people. I mean, the only reason I got on the ballot was it was before Black and Brown women that literally organized themselves. And we had Google spreadsheets. We were driving to people's houses to collect signatures just to get on the ballot, right? We produced an entire video that we shared online, that we asked people to share, that we put on IG and Facebook and Twitter and used the things, the tools that we had at hand to really get the word out. And then after that, I think, you know, that's when we started to gain traction and then things started to get a little bit easier, you know, for the actual campaign of once we were like on the ballot.
So you did the things women do, right? You gathered your friends, you got out and relied on the tactics that you knew how to already do in order to run for office. It was, it was not like a secret sauce. It was do the things I know how to do and that will lead me to success with my campaign.
A hundred percent. We do this all the time, right? We do this, if you love a particular product, you will post about it. If you love a restaurant, you will post about it. You'll tell your friends about it, right? Whether it's pictures or an experience or whatever, we do that all the time for things, right? How often do we do that for each other? And for really, when you're thinking about running, I mean, that's what you're doing, right? You are the thing. You're that restaurant, you're that product, you're that vacation that people need to post about and share. And each one of us has this network, right? And so it's just about passing the batons, about passing that message along, which was much more effective. And we saw that during the pandemic was word of mouth was everything. Like if it wouldn't have been for that and if it wouldn't have been for galvanizing my community, we wouldn't have been able to make it. I mean, there were 12 people for, just, just as a quick snapshot for perspective. I think it was 12 people pulled petitions for three city council spots that were open. Of the 12, only four people got onto the ballot. Because in Columbus, you need a thousand signatures, which really means you need almost 2,000 signatures to ensure that a thousand can be validated. So imagine doing that in a time where literally people were saying to me, pull up to my house, there's a little table, leave, leave, leave the, leave the petition on the table. I will come out and get it. I will sign it. I'll put it on the table and you can come up once I go in the house. Like that's how, I mean, some people came, came, we had like gloves and masks and hand sanitizer. They're like, I'm using my own pen. Like some people came and they wouldn't even take the petition. They would only take it if they had gloves on. Like it was bananas. Like I was like, there were times where I was like, this is, we're, I don't know how this is going to work. I don't know if this is going to happen. We stood outside in the freezing cold outside of like Bake Me Happy Bakery here to get signatures. Like that's how crazy it was.
Which is also a delicious bakery. So I'll just, I'll just put in a plug there for
And we now owned.
Free bakery. Smart move on that. So, you know, I, we think about women creating these communities for themselves. And, you know, as, as the matriot, we are here to promote women who are running for office. What are some things that, that organizations like ours can do to ensure that, that women are being promoted and that women are, that we're amplifying the voices of both candidates and electives? How can we be the most effective?
Yeah, so it's interesting. There's a statistic and I'm going to forget what the, what the number is, but it's like men need to be asked like one time to run for office and women need to be asked. I can't remember. It's a
Around six, around six times, yeah.
Around six times. I mean, first of all, there are a few things that we do in our regular lives where we need to be asked six times to do it, right? And I think that part of this is, you know, I think that women inherently, I remember watching this, oh, the show was, one of the comedians from Saturday Night Live and she was playing this character and she was talking about how she went to this conference and like it's all about women empowerment, right? And she's like, why do women need like t-shirts, bumper stickers, cards and an entire conference to tell us that we can do things and how great and powerful we are and then just like wake up in the morning, right? And this struck me because I think that that imposter syndrome is real, right? We do incredible things every day and we don't give ourselves enough credit for all the things that we do, right? We don't give ourselves enough credit for the, the jobs that we do, the children that we raise, the communities we uphold, the friendship groups, right? We talk about the, what role you play in your friendship group. I mean, all of those are leadership positions that you have, right? We just don't, you don't get credit for it. You know, the fact that we say a stay-at-home mom, you know, is that you're, you don't earn money, but you are doing an incredible amount of work, right? You should, you are raising people. Like what bigger job is there, right? And then add on any other responsibility of like whatever else you have to do or caring for other family members or, you know, the many roles that we play, whether traditional or, traditional or non. I mean, I think that we don't give ourselves enough credit for it. And so I think that if we can change that mentality for women of like, if you are doing all of this, you can help to run a city. If you are doing all of this, you can go toe-to-toe with any congressperson, any senator. You can meet with an area commission. You can push forward any piece of legislation. I mean, you inherently have those gifts and tools in you and you are demonstrating it every day. And you need to first believe that. And we need to change the narrative for women about what that means.
I, I'm going to take with me from today the quote of, if you are raising a human, you can run a city. If you are, if you are like doing that most important job of raising a human, you should, you know, you can, you have all the skills you need to be able to
A hundred percent. I mean, you're negotiating, dealing, dealing with sometimes unreasonable people compromise. I mean, every day, I do that every day. I'm raising, I come from a long line of very strong women. I'm raising two very strong ones now. When you see dancing in the background right there. And it is a daily negotiation and struggle. And there are no people who will call you on your stuff quicker than a young person will, so.
I'm just laughing internally because I, you know, I have three daughters as well. So this is, this is all ringing very true on this side of the Zoom call for me. The matriots has, has five values that we, that we talk about, that we endorse our candidates around, that we think really critically about. And I know that, that many of, that we align on all of the values, but I really wanted to pull out two to think about with you. We've talked a little bit about safe, healthy and prosperous communities in which to raise our families and, and the, the population in Columbus that you're working on with regard to that. I also want to think about economic empowerment with you because economic empowerment for women, because I know that is deep on your heart and something that you're passionate about. And so can you tell us a little bit about your, your focus on economic empowerment for women or communities of color or, you know, immigrant communities and what you're planning to do in that space?
Absolutely. Well, you know, it's interesting. I was on a panel not too long ago. We were talking about like the she session and we're talking about women coming back into the workforce and what that looks like. Increasingly, women are becoming the heads of household, right? Meaning we're making more money. We, we are the breadwinners, but we're not making enough. And when you look at communities of black women and Latinas, specifically the numbers go up astronomically of how much money that we are making, right? And, and we are really the breadwinners in our family, which, you know, made the pandemic all that much more. And, and that we are really the breadwinners in our family, which, you know, made the pandemic all that much more um, impactful on these communities. Because if I'm the one who's, you know, the caretaker, if I'm the breadwinner and I can't work or I have to worry about taking care of kids who can't go to school. Um, we saw the detrimental effects of that on, on communities across the board. But I think that we have an opportunity in Columbus where we have some emerging um, industries that we really need to start to elevate for our communities. First of all, there are amazing union jobs that, by the way, when we talk about equal pay, which is something that I'm deeply passionate about and every equal payday for every um, different uh, group of women, we are always out there trying to elevate and trying to educate people about what it means. Um, unions actually, because of their collective bargaining, women make the same amount as men. Already off the rip, they've, they're ahead of us, right? So if you are coming in and, you know, people are always gonna need plumbers, people are always gonna need carpenters, people are always gonna need these good trade jobs that are a path into the middle class, one. Second of all, many of those apprenticeship programs are debt free, debt free. So even if you want to go to college, or if you want to take another path, or if you want to go into another industry, this is something that can help to stabilize your family. And this is an industry that is, that, how, I think, what was the percentage like? A ridiculous percentage, I need a second cup of coffee today. Uh, but there's a pretty high percentage of union workers that are actually gonna be retiring within the next five years. Like, I think it's around like half of the workforce, right? Or half of the union members, I mean. And so, and many of them are older white men, right? So there's lots of opportunities within this industry, especially when you look at Black and Brown communities. And you think of, we, we know that every kid is not gonna go to college. We know that every adult isn't gonna go to college or didn't have that opportunity and now they're at a different point in their life. So these are opportunities, we're, we, jobs that are stable, well paying, again, that you can go through the process, be debt free. The fashion industry, we are number three in the country behind New York and Los Angeles in terms of fashion. And this is the whole industry. We're not just talking about like fashion designers. We're talking about in the fashion industry, there's design, there's marketing, there's logistics. And Columbus has a burgeoning um, industry in fashion. Folks don't know that. I saw your, your look of surprise. And this is, you know, this past summer, uh, we funded, city council funded a program for um, uh, Black and Brown youth to go through an apprenticeship of understanding the different elements of the fashion industry. Very cool. At the end, they did a pop up shop in the short north where young people could go, they could actually get the products for free. If you were not so young, or the parent of one of the young people you brought, you gave a donation and you could get it, t-shirts, sweatshirts. But the, I had an opportunity to sit down with these young people and they saw a career opportunity for themselves they might not have known about. And then the last one is tech, you know? Yeah, I'm sure you've heard of this, like where, where the next Silicon Valley or Ohio Com Valley or something, they were calling us funny. But um, this is also another industry where, you know, we need programmers, we need folks who, coders. And we have a series, again, council has been funding organizations specifically geared towards girls, specifically geared towards Black and Brown communities that um, is teaching folks about the tech industry and how they can go in, same thing. This is not an industry where you may need that four year degree, right? It may be a certification program, again, you're debt free. What it's doing is it's provide, helping you provide for yourself and for your family while you figure out the path that you want to take. It, we are not on this singular path, right, anymore. Right? That's, that's not what our young people or our adults who need to be into the workforce are facing. It is a path that goes like this, right? And you're gonna take turns. Uh, Michelle Obama called it the swerve or something in her book. Like, that's what folks need to be doing. Because um, there's lots of opportunities out there and we just need to elevate those opportunities, you know, from the council. And we've been looking at these programs, you know, I could continue on. In the hospitality industry, we uh, just funded a program for um, again, Black and Brown communities to get involved with the um, hospitality industry, right? Which is something that's growing in a city like Columbus that's growing, we're building hotels so that we can have more conferences come in. So those are just some of the things that we're, we're leaning into, uh, that again, we just need to elevate. So folks understand that those opportunities are there for them.
Well, and thinking about the opportunities also makes me think about the challenges, right? So are there challenges that are unique to the Columbus area, either created by these types of industries or through other things? Um, that we're seeing, that, that need to be addressed, that really are Columbus specific or central Ohio specific that you can think of?
I would say our biggest challenge is also our biggest opportunity. And that is um, our growth, right? I think that we are growing at a, and, and we're learning about growth from other cities that have grown at the pace that we have. And we're behind the eight ball on some things, but I do think that we have the oper- and, and what I mean by behind the eight ball is, you know, housing has gotten away from us, transportation has gotten away from us, right? But we're making, we understand that and we're doing something about it, right? We understand that we're ha- we're in the middle of a housing cri- crisis. And that's not just a housing, an affordable housing crisis. Literally, we don't have enough stock for the amount of people that are coming here. We have companies like Intel that are being built, that are giving, that are going to bring more people here. That promise of prosperity that we talked about before, right? That are gonna bring more people, we don't have places for them to live, right? And so we need to, we, you know, council member Favor has been leaning into housing, thinking about how some creative housing units, we have some folks out in the community that are thinking about housing in creative ways. Um, transportation, Linkus, which is that dedicated bus line of rapid transit. Um, that is getting us ahead, it's not light rail, right? But it is a form that is going to move people, that is going to create economic development and opportunities in specific corridors along the city. So I think that while we're challenged by this growth, we also have an opportunity as we think about how do we catch up in these areas that have kind of gotten away from us. We also can morally decide who we want to be as a city, right? And we don't talk about that often, especially when it comes to politics. But we could be a city that is um, centered on people and families and their prosperity. Or we can be a city that is centered on prosperity for some. And that this growth is for a few who are going to benefit from it and not the whole. And we have incredible, creative, progressive, young leaders, more seasoned leaders in Columbus that care, that have ideas, that want to lean into this work, right? And the, the, we have this opportunity now to really think about who we want to be in the next five, 10 years as a city. And so I think while we're challenged by it, I also think that that it is a greatest opportunity that we have that you're not gonna see in other parts of Ohio, just because Columbus is much healthier than the other parts of Ohio.
Well, and you talk about the five year, 10 year, that directional, kind of visionary leadership. What do you hope will be your stamp on the direction? And I know that you, you, it, just listening to you, you, you think about the we as opposed to the me, right? But, but I am, I am asking for you, what do you hope to be the legacy that you leave on city council?
Um, I think there are two things. One is our work with the immigrant migrant refugee population. You know, I think that um, this sort of growth and what is these communities that are driving that growth, it is game changing for our city, right? It is um, the thing that makes our city vibrant. It's the thing, it is that those, um, that richness, that tapestry of culture, right? Of music and of art, that's what drives a city. You see it in our neighborhoods, right? When you go to these, it's not those big fancy restaurants, it's the mom and pop shop where you get the best meals, right? It's these cultural events where you get to experience the world, even if you don't get to travel, right? You'd set proximity to people who are different. And so how are we investing in those communities? Because we know that when we invest in the communities that are the furthest away from justice, all boats inevitably rise, right? And so for me, it's how are we creating um, opportunities for access for these communities? And how are we making a difference in the lives of women? Because again, I think that an investment in women is an investment in families, is an investment in our future. When we give people a platform to really tap into the greatness that they inherently have in themselves, we all benefit from that. And the fact that we are in 2022 and we still have a first, and mind you, we will still have many other firsts on this city council. We have two new council seats, we could have two more firsts. We can have someone from, another person from the immigrant community. We could have um, someone from another identity who is coming on to this council and that's big. But I mean, at some point, while we celebrate these firsts and these groundbreaking opportunities, at some point, when are we, when do we come to this place where we, that is already inherently in the system, right? That, that's what equity is, that everyone has a seat at the table and we have these leaders sharing their voices and really leading their communities and we've created space for everyone.
Well, and we think a lot about the, you know, getting to parity, getting to promoting women into office. I, my hope is that I can celebrate the 283rd, you know, Latina in office um, as well as, as celebrating the first, right? So that we can, we can have these celebrations about women and empowerment. What um, what did the ma- thinking about the Matriots, because that's where we are today and we're sitting and talking about it. What did the Matriots endorsement mean for you? Did it help? How, and if so, how so?
Um, I think it absolutely helped. I mean, I think that, uh, again, I think that whenever women can support each other and that we're giving each other the opportunity, that we're elevating the voices of other women and other women leaders, especially when you have non-traditional leaders or leaders that don't look like um, the dominant cultures in our community. I think it's incredibly important, right? Because I think, you know, it's interesting, when I go out into the community and I see, you know, it could be in the African community or the Asian community. Um, and people look at me and they, they don't just see the first Latina, they see the first immigrant, right? And they're, or, or, you know, the first person from that community. And they're like, you represent us. That's power. That's powerful, right? And so I think having the full force of this community behind those ideas and those candidates, that is power. And when we can harness our power together, we are unstoppable, right? And so we can create more spaces where we can do that and harness the power and the energy of the whole. Um, that's when we really start to change the game.
And we have just a few minutes left because you actually, you, she is maybe the busiest person I have met as you are out there in the community, doing the hard work in Columbus. What would you want to leave with our members as, as a final statement or as a thought wrap up um, of, of how to support you best in office or, or where to, uh, you know, what, what is the best thing for us to take away?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say, um, you know, and I, I said this in my, um, when I took my oath of office afterwards, I think that when I talk about being at a precipice as a city of deciding who it is that we want to be, that is an all in effort, right? We are no longer at a point where we can just point fingers at you or you or me or them to, to fix the problems in our community, right? It literally, if everybody does a little something, we fill the hole, right? If everybody, whether it's joining your area commission, whether it's volunteering for an organization that you care about, whether it's seeing House Bill 616 and saying, this is not okay. And making that phone call to the, to your representative and saying, this is not okay. If it's galvanizing a group of people to do the same thing to, you know, it is always before the people that change happens. And so I, this is a time where I'm literally imploring people that like during the pandemic, we saw some of the best of us, right? We saw how people came together as communities to check on your neighbors, to, you know, um, to uh, uh, support our frontline workers, right? We saw communities coming together in intentional and meaningful ways, right? Not some performative things that we sometimes do, but in ways that really was proximate to other humans. And it was great. And we saw in the summer of 2020, we unjustly all together saw someone being murdered. And people said, this is enough. And we were moved to action and we moved the needle, right? And we still have a long way to go, but that, it, it is like pushing a boulder up a hill, right? One person, they're gonna get rolled over by that boulder. But if we all come together and with our, you know, join forces and with our combined strength, push that boulder up, we can start to make progress, right? And that's where we are as a city. And that's where we are as a state. Because I do firmly believe that we are fighting for the future of Ohio and who we want to be. And ensuring that people are safe and accepted and that there we see them and we see their identities. And we don't want to get yanked back into a time where it was unsafe for women, unsafe for people of color, unsafe for our G L B T Q um, brothers and sisters and other folks. That's not who we are. I believe that in my heart, that's not who we are. And so this is a time for people to come together. So whether that is running for office, volunteering, encouraging someone else to run, right? Everybody, if everybody does just a little bit, again, we can all make a difference together.
But for the people, change happens, right? That's what you said.
Always, but for the people.
But for the people, change happens. Thank you so much for being with us today. This, um, you know, it fills not only our cup, but also gives us clear direction on how to be engaged, how to get out into our community and also really importantly tells us, we don't have to do it all, we just have to do a little bit. And if we do a little bit, we can, with, you know, our brothers and sisters and others, we can push and, and make a difference in the Columbus area or more broadly as we think Ohio needs. So thank you so much for joining us today and, um, and we will be following very closely your path um, in office and otherwise. Uh, to my Matriots out there in the community, thank you for joining us today. If you have not yet joined the Matriots, you should. Uh, you can go to our website, which Abby will put in the chat here, it's on, um, it's also available on our Facebook page or you can just say www.matrietsohio.com. Follow us on our social media platforms and, and join us for more candidate conversations uh, that'll be coming up in the, in the coming weeks to talk about what change needs to happen in Ohio and how we get there individually with our amazing endorsed candidates like Lourdes. Thank you so, so much, everyone, for being here today and especially you, Councilmember Bono Sadepadiya, we can't do it without you.
Thank you. I couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great day, everybody. Bye, Matriots.